Okay, roll call. Say here.
Here.
Krista.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Myself here.
You need the nameplates that we have.
It's not my name on the budget.
Oh. Okay, approve the agenda. Any problem with agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the special hearing agenda on the 2018-19 school budget as presented.
Second and first and second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, presentation of proposed budget for the 2018-19 school year.
Okay, got just a handful of slides to go through which will give us, you know, trying to not have too many numbers, but also just a lot of graphs. And I think the important thing is to show trends. Also to talk about what some of the strategic planning has been for the board.
She probably didn't get all the first and seconds while she was gone, so let me catch her up.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he opened the hearing.
Okay.
Mike said.
That was nice, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Approved agenda.
We approved it?
Yeah.
Vicky and Krista.
Thank you.
Okay, so primarily, you know, putting together a school budget, of course, after anything once you do it several times starts to become a little easier and easier, kind of find out that it's really not an incredibly complicated process if you can get through the auditor of public accounts, you know, forms that they want you to fill out, the formulas and how well that thing works. But just in terms of where your dollars are going to go, it's generally not incredibly complicated. Seventy percent of it is usually going to be eaten up by personnel decisions that were made by your last negotiated agreement. And so there goes an overwhelming majority of your budget dollars right there is just personnel. And then it's going to depend on a whole lot of other factors, what your big expenditures are going to be, transportation, facilities, maintenance, a lot of those things. It's been no secret that this board has supported some upgrades in facilities that maybe have been, you know, neglected to kind of keep up over the course of the past, you know, couple of decades. And so there's been a concerted effort to try to focus some tax asking in the area that allows us to modernize some facilities, renovate some facilities and so on. And that's been no secret over the past couple of years what we've done with that. Okay, so I'll just go through here some of the things that we're going to look at in the next several slides. There is a list of those things. So there's a little bit of the history of our state aid. This is not unlike what you would find in a lot of rural schools in Nebraska. A majority of schools in Nebraska, there's 244 districts in the state of Nebraska, and maybe 15 years ago, 200 of those 244 received equalization aid, received state aid. Now, it's a misnomer when school districts say they don't get any state aid. Every school district gets some state aid. It's whether you get equalization aid, and that's usually the big check that you would get. But rural areas that are more reliant on property taxes have been falling off of the equalization aid list. And so there's just now, I don't even know how many, but it's a small, small number of the 244 school districts that actually get state equalization aid. We haven't received it for I don't know how many years, but you can go back a little bit, the 2009-10 school year, you know, $163,000 is a significant amount. I mean, that can, you know, pay for three teachers, for example. And then you can see just how sporadic it was. And now we can expect to receive little to none, although $31,000 is nothing to sneeze at. So we had a spike, a peak spike last year from 226 up to 42,000, somewhere in there. And this next year it's $31,000. So this is not unlike you would probably find in most rural districts that are pretty reliant on property values to run their school district, okay? And there, of course, is no secret to what property valuations have done. And so they're rebounding a little bit, leveling off, obviously. Last year we had about a 2% decrease in property valuations. They told us to expect about the same, and that's pretty nominal. I mean, you can absorb that pretty well, but we actually had a minor increase, about a half of a percent, a little less than half of a percent of property valuation. So our total in Knox, Pearson, and Hallow, $733,388,000 in total property valuation. So our spike is 747. Whether we'll ever see that again or whatever, who knows? And that's just the number that we get to work with, that we have to work with. Okay, obviously, we don't have anything to do with that. General levy trends. Okay, so you can see where the general levy has gone from almost a dollar down to a proposed 56 cents for next year. And then there are the total levy, the general levy, and the general, the building, and the total levy. The other levy that you can use is a QC puff levy, which I don't know that many public schools has ever used that, and it's a little complicated for folks really to understand, but it's for special life safety projects that a school district may have. Okay, so you can see the red line down towards the bottom, obviously, that has trended upwards in the past few years. That's our building levy, so focusing dollars on spending monies on facilities, whether it's modernization, outright construction, or renovation, restoration. Okay, so here are a lot of numbers. Okay, so going for past, for the past six years, you know, the top line is the total valuation, okay, and what it did from the previous year. So you can see when it started to spike, up 18% in the 13-14 fiscal year, up 29% then the next year. So that's when our unicameral in particular was hearing from the rural areas that this is just out of control. Sadly, school districts in rural areas many times are seen as the culprit for the rise in property valuations. They're not, okay? But, so we don't have a property tax problem in Nebraska, we have a funding problem. The funding formula is just out of whack. Sales, income, and property taxes is a three-legged stool that is supposed to support by statute public schools. We've just become overly reliant upon property taxes. That's rebounding slightly, but in order to fund public schools, well, they'll have to find more monies in income or sales if we want to give some relief to the property valuation. So you can kind of see where those have gone, 16, 17, up 1.4%. Valuations last year went down 2.36, and then they went up just over, right at about 0.4%. So your tax levies and what they have done, obviously, that when the valuation goes up, the levy's gone down, and that was district of the board for several years. And that makes sense. If your valuations go up and we need X amount of dollars, well, we can ask for less in the levy. So you can see where those trends have gone, the total taxes generated, and you can see where those numbers have gone. So just obviously want to point out that the board's budget the past, last year and proposed for this year both call for less taxes than the previous year. I'll, you know, slight, I mean, but still, if it's a negative number, we're going to point that out. Okay, so our levy rate based on our present property valuations, each one cent of levy will generate approximately $73,300. Okay, county treasurer gets 1%, and then we don't ever pull in 100% of taxes. So we're probably about $65,500 per one penny levy. Okay, so there's the grasp for our tax asking and what that has done. Okay, with some total numbers in there, and I realize you probably can't see these, you know, back there, but as well, but you get a sense based on the graph. And again, this isn't a lot, a whole lot different than our levy graph as well. The building fund trending upward, the general fund stagnant or slightly trending down. Okay, general fund percentage of budget spent at the end of each of the last fiscal year. So we don't spend everything that we budget for. We are required by statute to budget, to spend every dollar that we have at our disposal, including the balance of all of our funds. And I'll show you a graph in a little bit that shows that. And we have to have a balanced budget. Okay, you're required by law, by statute, to have a balanced budget, and you're also required by law to budget to spend every dollar that you have available to you. Okay, so I don't know any school district that spends their entire budget. Well, you can't, it would be foolish, but you have to show on paper that you are. So this is what, so we're going back to 2011, '12, we spent 90% of our budget, okay? We dipped down to 82% of our budget three years ago. This last year, we spent 81.69% of the budget that the board approved last fiscal year, okay? And going back, I went back eight years, and so that's the lowest amount. So what this says, and what I want the public to know, is that spending is reasonable. You know, even though sometimes it's maybe, it might not pass the eyeball test because folks have seen the things different and new the past few years compared to the previous decade. And so there's maybe a sense that we're spending all kinds of money. Well, most of all of those expenditures are rather cosmetic, so they don't, you know, amount to a high percentage of the budget because we actually spent a smaller percent of our budget last fiscal year than in the previous eight years. Okay? General fund budgeted the past several years, okay? So from bottom to top, and you can see how that number has changed, okay? And so in this proposed budget for next fiscal year, we have a very small reduction in the amount of money budgeted in the general fund. Okay, and so this would show, you know, a similar trend, okay? But in the last two years, we have decreases in tax asking. Okay, estimated revenues, okay? So these numbers have to, we have to have the same amount in our revenue, obviously, at the end of our revenue column as we do our expenditure column, okay? So, you know, these are, a lot of these numbers are just kind of, they're fluffed to bring that total bottom number up to the total amount of dollars that we have available to us, counting all of our funds, depreciation fund, building fund, activity fund, all of those. We have to budget to spend all of those dollars. So we do have to estimate our revenues and inflate our revenues to bring that total number up so that it's balanced. Okay, and there are those other major funds, okay? So total resources available to our school district, okay? So it's our general fund, which we saw on this last page, okay? Plus, we have to show the balance of every other fund that we have. So we have to show in our budget, we have this much money available to our school district. Okay, so we have to budget to spend that much money as well. But of course, we don't, and no school district does. Okay, so this is the actual budget that we will be, that this hearing is for, that the board will be voting on. This is the actual budget sheet that is required by the Department of Ed and the state council.
Is that in the traffic somewhere, Darren?
We've got a copy for you. And your tax asking is there as well, if you'd like.
Thank you.
But these were, this document was in the newspaper, it was required by, required by law. So this will also show a little bit of trend in, you know, our actual disbursements in fiscal year ended last year, fiscal year just ended August 31st, okay? And then proposed budget for this next fiscal year.
So we are shut down right now? Because we don't have a budget?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little crazy that we're, you know, we're operating in new fiscal year without a budget. That's, yeah, as good as the timelines.
July 1st, right?
The what?
July 1st is your fiscal year?
No, September 1st, yes.
Okay, questions and comments from the board?
I think that, you know, we're able to hold our budget, the general budget down because we don't have two full-time teachers that we had the previous year. So that has made us, with inflation and everything, kind of stayed level. We do want to increase our building fund because this building does get old. The many, the survey that we sent out after the combination of the schools was defeated, the overwhelming majority wanted to see improvements made to this school. And I think our, hopefully, our next step is, is that we can get air conditioning in the older building. Don't tear it down, let's do that. I think we can do that at a reasonable fee, but we're going to have to raise our building funds in order to be able to make these improvements to our school. We need to do LED lighting in the schools. In the elementary, please go over there and look at it, the lighting is excellent. And the air over there, the air quality is wonderful, if you've been in there previously. And so we need that air quality also in that old building. It's not good for the computers up there, it's not good for the kids, all that humidity. And this year's been terrible for humidity. I think the kids deserve it, the teachers deserve it. So hopefully, that will be one of the next projects that we can do. The music room, that needs to have air conditioning as well, just because of the instruments. We have a lot of money invested in those instruments, and the humidity is very, very hard on them. And so we shuffle them around in the summer so that they're not in that heat. And so if we could keep them there and be able to use those instruments without having them back and forth, that would be great. Same way with the industrial arts, if we can get some air moving around in there. So there are some projects that definitely need to be done. We've come a long way, we didn't do any for a long time, and that, we all know that you have to do a little bit each year, stay on top of the game, and don't let it all bombard you at once. So hopefully, we're in the right step to do that.
Oh, one thing I'll add to that, too, is, you know, Vicky mentioned we didn't replace two teachers from last year, so we've got a little extra money there for the general fund. Basically, we're moving that to the building fund. And that's just a one-year deal, and that, we think that will pretty much cover putting air conditioning in this old building. We've kind of got some ideas on prices from training where there were here, nothing official. So that's what's making us think we could maybe do this in one year, the savings that we have in one year. You know, everybody knows we've got a couple of payments to make on what we did over there yet, and that's kind of strapping us down for a couple of years. And next year, we may have to hire two more teachers back, I mean, let's hope we have the kids that we need to. But this year, we have that opportunity to have that money and do something else with it, so that's what we're trying to take advantage of doing. So if we can pay for it in one year, the next year, we're back to square one if we don't have it, or it has to go somewhere else, it does, but we're not strapped with that, if you. So that's kind of what our conversation was in our committee, how we came up with these numbers. Any questions?
Sound good, do you?
I heard there's water issues in the old building? Yes, enough.
Gave replaced the pipe?
In the bathroom.
Gail replaced the pipe last week. Yeah, it was original 100-year-old elbow cast iron pipe, had a hole bored through it. So is that something to expect?
I just don't mind putting Band-Aids on things. Well, this air conditioning deal that we're looking at, it must not be super expensive. We don't have to do a lot with electrical. And these units are probably maybe 15-year tops, life expectancy on them, so they're not, that's why they're not real expensive. So, you know, this is going to get us by another 10, 15 years. I think we can get something major done in the next 10 or 15 years.
I don't know, we have four, and our pipe is breaking.
I don't know. You know, that first floor broke, but what did it cost us to fix that? Did it cost us pretty much to have it fixed? And now a second one is broke, and we don't need the roof, could be fixed probably from the same amount of money. You know, they are expensive things, but I understand what you're saying, too, I mean, how do you get to fix them? The thing is, at what point, if we're in, Bill passed the bond issue?
And no decision certainly made on that.
No, I know.
But if we, if we wait to try to make a decision on that building and whether it's going to go down, and we're going to spend millions of dollars to build five, six, seven, eight classrooms, they'll continue to squelch it over there, kids will. And we, it's, it's really unacceptable. We shouldn't have, you know, it's probably something that should have just been held with maybe years ago, even though I sure wouldn't have, without elastic effects. But, I don't know, it would be about $20,000 per classroom, to air condition for a decade is kind of the estimate. But again, that's, we may be, you know, off the conversation from here.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, I'll still get to the board later on, because I don't know, this is just kind of, we don't have to spend it.
We just want to replace that, keep that building firm growing so that we have the funds to make repairs if needed.
Anybody else have anything? Otherwise, we'll move on to questions and comments from the districts. Anybody else out there have any comments they would make on?
You guys aren't sure if we do that AC project yet, but I mean, are you looking possibly in the summer, or is that still a debate?
It's a possibility. Like I said, we can put that money in the building fund and keep building it for another bigger project down the road, or we could spend it on air conditioning. And probably have enough to do that without having to borrow any more or raise the levy to do it.
I don't know if there's a timeline or anything, that's why.
What's that?
I don't know if there's a, you guys have a timeline or?
No, not necessarily. Really, we would have to start the process, we'd have to get bids officially, we have to get two bids before we can do anything. We just, you know, we had train here, so we had them go look at it and say, you know, is there anything you can do reasonably? And they said, yeah, there is. So I just kind of got the wheels turning. So it might come down to, you know, when you got to sign the paper, we might say, no, that's more than you said, we don't want to do it, but it's a possibility. But that'll be a board decision on whether we want to go with that at a later time.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm adjourned this first meeting. I'll call meeting to order for special hearing of the tax request. Is there a motion to declare open meeting? I'll make a motion to declare open meeting.
I'll second that.
First and second, are there any in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there, if you want to read that. Roll call.
Trump?
Yep. Krista?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Vicky?
Here.
Myself here. Okay, can you approve this agenda? If you have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve special hearing from consideration of 2018-2019 tax request.
Second.
I'll second.
Got first and second, are there all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Presentation of proposed tax request for 2018-2019 school year.
Just one slide, that one right there. This is the actual document, it's required of the auditor of public accounts of the Department of Education. So it'll show the far left column with the numbers, that's, that was the budget last year that the board adopted. This one tells you that based on the current, based on the new valuation, if you want the exact same monies, this is what you would have to levy, so you kind of ignore that one. This is the proposed tax asking in the budget being considered tonight. So I just wanted to put in here for you, based on these numbers, so these are last year's, this is proposed, okay, and what it does to the total, okay, and what it does to the tax asking. So as I mentioned in the presentation of budget hearing just prior, we're asking for less, very slightly less, significantly 3 cents less in the general fund, which that is significant. And this primarily due as Mr. Sauer said, we reduced our staff by two staff members, and that is your biggest expense, personnel's about 70% of your entire budget, okay? And a staff member, if you take a staff member's salary, benefits, FICA, Npers, retirement, all those things, that adds up, you know, well beyond what you just know what their salary is. And so by reducing our staff, by absorbing those positions, we are leaner, we're a leaner staff. We had those conversations in the spring, the board asked myself and Mrs. Novicki whether we can do it without any kind of decrease in services to the kids. We feel we can, we feel we are. So that puts us in a position to be leaner here. And then it was the committee's recommendation that we try to keep that building fund pretty solvent. We're using those monies to pay for the elementary project this summer. So that was an aggressive project over there that was going to use our building fund dollars for a few years in a row unless we saw some type of increase, which the board saw fit, the committee saw fit, to add the 2.5 cents more. It's offset by this 3 cents less, so we're right at 1 half cent less total asking on your bottom line. So this is the document really that is, to me, is generally more meaningful to our tax pickers. So this is what the board's budget committee has put together. This was draft four when we were working together. And so they asked me to go in and spit out some different numbers, and so I did that, and we got to this one and had a good discussion, and this is the one that they want to present to the full board.
Peter Carroll? Any more questions from the board, comments? Okay, any questions from the patrons, comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Okay, I'm going to call meeting of plenty of public schools, Department of Education to order. It's all stamped, said "Pledge allegiance." Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I entertain motion to declare open meeting.
So move.
First and second, are there any in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed, nay. The Open Meetings Act is still on the door, I remember, there's still nobody's ever read it that I've ever seen. Roll call, myself here, my, Vicky?
Here.
Jason, Karen, Krista?
Here.
Yep.
Okay, consent to agenda, approve. First, agenda itself, I guess. There, amen to? Move on to minutes. There are a lot of financials, there's nothing there.
Just hit those two CDs that matured, well, with the economy's doing better, you get a little better rate. But just talked to Mr. Ickwood today as well, on Madison County one that matures, uh, here in a week. Uh, so we're kind of in a little bit negotiations for that right now, it wasn't at two point oh, but, uh, it's significantly higher than the point seven, so.
Close to two point oh?
Closer to two point oh.
Closer and close, is that?
It's a one sum.
Okay, then that's not where our money's generated. How long CDs are those?
How, what?
They, what are they, how many years?
Every year.
Every year.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go to claims if there's nothing else.
One of those big numbers in claims was that ninety-five hundred dollar check for staff development. Well, our expense is really gonna be about six hundred and fifty, is that right Kelly?
Six forty-seven.
Six forty-seven, fourteen schools that are all matured, and we paid the, the big bill because, uh, we're the ones that arranged for him to come, but we're being reimbursed slowly but surely. After a couple of months, Kelly will get nasty with the business managers and schools that haven't paid us yet, but, but those funds won't go back into this area to necessarily offset, I mean, it'll go into a revenue account, that obviously is an expenditure account, but that ninety-five hundred dollars will really, our total is six and a half.
Got a question on this one athletic warrants. It says B B Jamboree, but it says M D, I don't know if that's nearly northeast, what, high school hall of fame?
Nebraska, high school of them, Jamborees were authorized a few years ago to try to generate money from the NSA. So they let you play one practice game, uh, take admission, but all the funds has to go to the NSA Hall of Fame looking. So I don't know, most schools probably participate in those, are those basketball as well? So basketball and volleyball only, you play what's called a jamboree game, and it helps fund the Nebraska Hall of Fame.
But as the coach of the volleyball team, um, it also helps the volleyball team.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Because as our numbers decrease, it's kind of nice to see what you actually have to work on before you get to that first game.
Yeah, it's a good scrimmage.
And, and we try to keep it close, I mean, we go to Osmond.
And that's the only team we participate in the jamboree with, isn't it, so.
Um, basketball, I think they're looking at Osmond as well. Osmond or Creighton, we are the two best options, bro.
So do you have any doubt, uh, athletic passes, like the board, I'll get some, do you have the finals from the conference?
Uh, no, but that's just lost income. So you, you're talking about the Pliny School or the Lewis and Clark?
Lewis and Clark.
Yeah, they give every school, I, I don't even know, every, every conference kind of struggles a little bit with those on, because some schools have, would need fewer, but I think they all get the same. They just deal with what they want, it's just lost income, it's not an expense to us.
Thanks for coming to sign all those checks this morning.
Yeah.
Then I have to read through these the whole night, I'll sign them. Is everybody good on that then, on the claims question?
All the bookcases are in then, Jim did?
They are, and they're, they're really nice, I mean, he does, he does great work. We, we wish that everything was done August one, and it just wasn't reality, didn't get, but it was worth it. He, he did it, they match, very, very nicely.
They, they look good, I just didn't, they were all.
Yeah, they're all.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
First and second, if all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. For now that portion of our agenda set aside for public comment, each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you in a five minute time period of lapse. Please remember this is a public meeting, conduct of the business of the Pliny Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. Anybody wishing to speak this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to say a piece, um.
If I just, stand up, say who you are, sort of.
Yeah, I'm Justin Door, uh, Pliny alumni, so. My, I have a Wyatt, who is a sixth grader, and then Connor, who's in first.
And Danny's in fifth.
Who's in preschool, and Danny's in fifth, so. Here's, the thing I wanna raise awareness for is, uh, fifth and sixth graders had recess last year, upwards of twenty, thirty minutes. And this year, they don't have recess. Now, I know it's not on the agenda for discussion this evening, like I said, I just wanna raise awareness that this is happening. I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't know if you guys plan to discuss this evening, but, uh, I plan to be on the agenda for next meeting. I don't know what the process to do that is, do I speak with you now, here, or talk with you, Dr. to get on the agenda?
Mr. Sauer and I set the agenda, so we determine, uh, what those items be, we're certainly taking requests from patrons.
Okay.
Uh, so it would be something that we would have to talk with.
Right.
At, at this meeting, you know, after this meeting, I should say.
Yeah, sounds good, I just wanted to get the wheels turning and kind of get it, get it out there to make people aware that this is what's happening.
May I say something? I'm Melissa Door, Justin's wife, who's a lucky guy. But now, if the kids don't have recess and there's not enough time, I understand that we're short a teacher. But what I don't understand is why they're coming home with so much homework. I have talked to a lot of parents and we all feel the same. Uh, it seems like there are days where they come home with an hour. I, and at parent teachers, I plan to discuss this with the, with the kids as teachers and say, it's my kids growing around, and this is not an issue with the younger ones. I mean, Connor comes home with homework in first grade, and I agree with that. I agree that they need to have homework at that age, it takes five minutes. Um, it's to get the parents involved in what they're doing. What I don't agree with is if they can sit in a classroom and read A R for an hour, and then they come home and they have homework. I'm just wondering what happened from last year. Last year, they had recess, they came home, sometimes they came home with more homework than other days. But I'm just wondering what happened, and I've talked to a lot of parents that feel the same way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, move on to committee reports, Budget Committee. Well, we met the other day and we pretty much got everything we talked about, I guess, so. Came up with, uh, you know, what Vicky had pretty much said, and what I said earlier, and that's kind of what we looked at when we put this thing together, and feel like, uh, you know, we feel like we spent a lot, a lot of money with that couple of payments left, and we don't wanna get, do it anymore than what we could pay for in a year's time, because we don't wanna extend those payments. That's kind of how we came up with this, so we felt we, we could generate a little bit of, of building fund money this way, and keep things moving a little bit, and still make our payments and not have to borrow anymore. So, that's, that's kind of what we came up with.
Like Dr. Alt said, we went through four proposals, it just wasn't a wham bam. We threw out a lot of numbers and, and come up with what we thought was the best situation for the schools at the present time.
We could've done nothing, lower our levy, or we could've done a lot. You know, we, we can go up to a dollar five on our levy, so we can generate a ton of money if we really wanted to, but, uh, you know, this is kind of what we felt comfortable with, because it's, it's kind of a one-year deal, and, and then we can decide here from now what we wanna do at that point, so. And building funding, you put as much money in as you want, right?
Yeah, fourteen. That, there's been a big, there was a big push in Unicamwell last year to, to limit that, to restrict that, to actually require for the patrons for any building fund levy amount, and that failed. Uh, that will probably, something will be brought back, last I heard, is potentially a, a school district can levy up to ten cents, anything over ten, from ten to fourteen, you're gonna need owner approval for. But again, uh, you know, statute right now gives that authority to the school board. And, and not to the district patrons. You know, so that's just been a, an attempt by Senator Brony, uh, to try to restrict, uh, school district spending. And in my opinion, they looking at that instead of actually trying to solve or find a solution to the property tax reliance issue. That's the real issue at heart, not, uh, school district spending, in my opinion, and every other superintendent's spending.
And that fourteen cents is within that dollar five, it's not over above that.
That's within the dollar five total.
Okay, anybody else, any other comments, move on. Behind is policy and procedure.
I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the policy and procedure committee meeting that was held earlier.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been first and second to go into closed session to discuss the policy and procedure committee meeting that was held earlier. Mike, hold on, Mike?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Can we go across, uh, call?
What was the stated reason?
What's that?
I, they didn't state a reason to go into closed session?
Yes, they did, to discuss the policy and procedure.
He's asking why, I guess, I thought there was only a couple reasons to go into that, to protect.
Oh, to protect.
Reputation, or?
Yeah, um, you don't, you can, you can read that language verbatim, but, uh, a public board can go into closed session for any item listed on the agenda. It's not automatically, uh, it shouldn't be assumed that it has anything to do with the personal, with the protection of reputation of anybody. Uh, do you, we can go in and discuss budget numbers, you know, if they wanna, if the board wants to do that, you know, privately.
On and add enough for the more specific reason there.
It was so cold in here today when they were testing, I can't believe those kids did not. Well, what happened? I don't think it's that hot. Oh, I'm cooking. I know, I'm.
Come out closed session for policy and procedure discussion committee meeting, um, Mike? Vicky?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Okay, there are the number ten discussion items, enrollment numbers.
That was approached by Creighton. They have a total of, right now, eight boys in sixth and seventh grade, total of eight boys in sixth and seventh grade. Now, there are five sixth graders at Saint Ledgers that conceivably will come over to, to public, and so, um, so, so with this conversation, I, I wanted to take it a step or two or three further, and so I requested from Creighton their total boy enrollment K twelve right now, because boy enrollment is what school districts go by now for classification, for football, and now it's also for all boys' sports, except for track, tennis, and a couple other things. So they're going to boy-only enrollment for boys' sports, girl-only enrollment for girls' sports, generally. And this is a huge deal for football, uh, because football's in real, real danger in the state of Nebraska, uh, in smaller schools. So I, I said, I, okay, so you're, you're worrying about putting a junior high football team on the field next year. But I'm not interested in just, uh, one year on, one year off, maybe next year, maybe three years down the road. Uh, let's look at this big picture. So I requested from Creighton their total boy enrollment, and they were kind enough to give it. Osmond's, and I said, well, shoot, if that's good enough for Creighton, I wonder how would Osmond's number turn? So I asked for Osmond's boy enrollment as well, uh, and then I put that with ours. Uh, and then I projected out many, many, many years to twenty twenty-five, uh, what classification numbers would look like for boy-only enrollment at your September thirtieth snapshot of grades nine, ten, and eleven. That number right there is gonna be your classification number for athletics, your September thirtieth attendance snapshot. So, uh, I figured the grades nine, ten, and eleven enrollment for the next several years, and football, of course, is in two-year classification, so you kind of figure it and then skip every other year to see what your classification number's gonna be. This year, uh, forty-seven, forty-eight was the cutoff between eight-man and eleven-man. Am I saying that right? Uh, twenty-seven was the number for six-man to eight-man, uh, because we've dropped down from, uh, eight, from D one to D two. Uh, we actually have our smallest classification number that we're gonna have for boy enrollment for a decade or more. So our enrollment numbers, boy only and girl only, but if we're just talking boy, because that's what this conversation was about, uh, are very, very strong, uh, going all the way down to kindergarten. We have nineteen boys in kindergarten, Osmond has nine, Creighton has ten. Okay, first grade, Osmond has four boys, Pliny has eighteen, Creighton has nine. Now, I'm not gonna go through every number, I'll provide this data to you if you'd like it, certainly. Uh, but we also have a parochial school, so I found out from Saint Mary's, Saint Ledgers, and Zion, what are your, what's your enrollment classification, boy and girl, and they were all kind enough to share that. So I threw those numbers in there, so can see, and we know these, these numbers will fluctuate over the years, no doubt, but it gives us a good picture right now about what boy enrollments are for Creighton, Pliny View, and Osmond, looking forward many, many, many years. Okay, so we are in a, in a, in a position of, of, of strength. We're in a geographical position of, of strength, I think. I don't know that we should necessarily use that to do what's best for Pliny View, but I also think, um, we should be in a position of bargaining, uh, if indeed we think it would be best for us to look to help the school out, uh, or even beyond that, if, if somebody really thought, well, let's make a great tough C one school here in northeast Nebraska to compete with the, the Pierce's and the Moon Centrals and the North Fork Catholics and the Lanes and so on. Maybe that's somebody's future for us, you know, and it's worth having that conversation. I'd rather have that conversation than, we're gonna co-op junior high football next year with Creighton. Okay, now, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to have that conversation with Creighton and to invite them to come, bring their boys over here and join our junior high football team. If they want their kids to get experience, um, I think that'd be good, we, we currently have some of their boys playing in our youth program. A couple of their boys play in our youth program, I think that's great. I don't believe in holding grudges. Uh, my very first board meeting, we had a discussion about whether, you know, we, we, we were gonna need to weather a difficult couple of years, because we had a dip in boy enrollment, and, um, our board, our board voted, you, this board, other members, but the Pliny Public Schools Board voted to co-op, uh, junior high football, although there was a conversation about all junior high sports and so on, um, and they failed to get a motion, uh, in Creighton at that time. I, I visited with Mr. Thompson about that, that was before Mr. Thompson came on board. I know they have a new board, and I think a new board should be given the opportunity to speak for their school district at that time, and they shouldn't be held bound by maybe decisions or positions of previous boards. But I did wanna do some research for us, and really see what, what does the future hold, what does the future look like? It looks very, very good for, for Pliny, numbers-wise, and certainly, uh, talent-wise, and the kids that we've got coming up, and I guess it gives me an opportunity, uh, to mention Coach Fromm, who's here. We, we've got, we've got some, some terrific youth city rec programs going on right now. And that is because we have great parents working with our kids, volunteering, I don't think you can pay, did you? Keep waiting for that check.
So wait, wait till you know, schoolboy, it'll double.
And I was able to watch, uh, our kids participate yesterday against a combined team of Wausau Osmond. I mean, a couple of our, our friends down the road who are, are struggling with numbers and maybe struggling with participation, it doesn't appear that we're struggling with numbers or participation. Uh, and I was on, on the sideline to see how their coaches interacted with those kids compared to how I know our youth coaches interact, because those kids are at a position where, how am I gonna do this, or, you know, I'm, I'm doing it now because I think it's kind of cool. Do I really wanna do this when kids are getting bigger, do I really wanna, you know, this is hard work, or that? They'll, they can go either way, and right now, back in the day, you just played football. Now, kids are, a lot of times they're looking for a reason maybe to not play football. And when I see, uh, uh, you know, Wyatt and Kevin, and Kevin, and, and Toby, and, and who else am I gonna miss in right now?
Uh, you could, you could expand from that, it's not just football, but soccer.
Yeah.
I mean, kids from those two towns have played here for years, uh, they're coming down to play baseball here now during the summers too. It's, it's. It's, it's expanding anyway, it's not just football.
Yeah, certainly what the Nate Sahelsers have done, and, and I know what the Lincoln Fellers do with soccer, but...
Ballback organization, soccer, youth anyway, organization here, it's, it's really starting to kinda catch on, I guess, accepting more kids than from these other towns, so these kids, they know each other. But they, they co-op together all the time in these youth sports, and it, it wouldn't be a, a leap by any means to have kids come over and get along anyway from Creighton to Osmond at all, so it's...
It's very promising.
Yeah.
Very promising, and, and I think it's a, primarily a testament to, to the adults that we've got working with those young kids. Because it takes a special person to, to keep a kid interested and motivated and excited when they might be getting beat on, which didn't happen to our kids yesterday. So, it happens anyway. So, I, we're, we're, we're in a position of advantage, really, and, you know, how maybe we wanna consider that at all, I don't know. I probably would not propose that we dissolve who we are so that we can help Creighton right now, but, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna come across that, but, but I think we, that we certainly, I'd be, I'd be happy to invite them to come and join us if they wanna get that experience. And then Creighton's numbers rebound a little bit, they got twelve boys in fifth grade, eighteen boys in fourth grade. So, Osmond's are a little different, their numbers are single digits all the way down after, after seventh grade, but...
Did you get the feeling, Dr. O, that Creighton was talking long-term or just a short-term fix?
Just one year is, is what I was, he's, now, I, I don't know that, I haven't spoken directly with Mr. Clemente or Mr. Thompson specifically about this, but Randy did contact Robin. And he brought it to me, and then I asked Mr. Thompson for their, their boy enrollment numbers. So, yeah, my position wouldn't necessarily be that we try to co-op junior high football next year, and we do some practice here and some practice there, we've had those conversations. My position would probably be, this is when we practice junior high football, and we'd be happy to give your kids an, an experience to continue to work on those skills. Knowing that they're, you know, we're not, we're not saying the R-word, but but we'd be happy to have them come and, and work with our kids and our coaches, you know. So, I guess that's where my position is, but this is just for your information, these enrollment numbers.
According to this, I mean, if that forty-eight number stands, by 2023, we're gonna be back to eleven man and stay there. The entirety of this, and Creighton's gonna jump back and forth, so it's not like their number is... This is total boys, so... Yeah, it's not out. But that's what they, but you're wrong.
I don't anticipate honestly that we're gonna go, that we're ever gonna be eight and eleven, you know, honestly. Because their, their, that, that number is changing quite a bit, we're at that cutoff, so... But we're gonna go back to D-one, there's no doubt about it, in, in a couple of football cycles. And is that a big deal? Still eight-man, that's probably not that big of a deal, but I think we're gonna, with what I saw yesterday, we're gonna be able to compete with about eight, but very encouraging.
Well, I guess the one thing I'd be concerned about, you started doing it at the high school levels, you're gonna wanna watch those numbers, because you don't want bringing in five kids and then throws you up in the next class, one by one kid.
Because you have to take the entire enrollment, you're just...
Exactly.
So, I mean, if we were to co-op, it's their boy enrollment plus our boy enrollment, and then your classification would be eleven man. And that's, that's the big thing that schools consider when they're in that position, to maybe bump to a different classification. C-two to C-one, no big deal for most schools. Even C-one to B, not necessarily, depending upon what they're gonna gain, but going from eight to eleven, that would take a pretty serious conversation, I guess, whether you thought that was the right thing to do. And again, some people might think that, uh, Plainview, Creighton, Osmond would make a pretty doggone tough eleven-man football team. Maybe, well, I mean, that's, it'll be a, a long way between here and, and there, but so just, they, we were, we were contacted.
So, are you gonna get back with them? I mean, what's the news?
Yep.
Or is it their turn to contact us?
No, I'll, I'll let Mr. Thompson know that we, you know, had a conversation about it, and, and I think they knew that, and I, I did share these with them, so I mean, they, they shared their numbers, I put all this together, and then I spent...
Did you have to go get them, or did they share them?
They shared them.
How we handled this, I guess, when it was going the other way, is we, you know, kinda went through this process, and then we formed a committee. And they formed a committee, and we went, we got together and talked, and that was pretty much it. Because they didn't wanna do it at either, either school, so it didn't take long to know where they stood. So, I guess if they really wanna pursue this, that would probably be our next step, is to get two committees together and talk about it, see what they think. Unless you, unless you wanna handle it. If, if you're helping about doing it. I mean, if you don't... If our board says, yeah, we wanna talk to them, that'll be a formal committee, if we say we really don't wanna do it, there's no sense. Formal committee. Yeah. Good. See how hard they wanna pursue it, I guess. Okay, action items, number eleven, adoption of the 2018, 2019 school budget. We're all here. Any more conversation on this? Anybody have any more questions or comments? Prior to meetings? If not, we will...
I'll make a motion that we adopt the 2018, 2019 school budget as presented.
Second? Seconded? Myself, yes. Trent?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, number twelve, approval of tax request for the 2018, 2019 school year. Basically a formality, keep your motion.
I have a motion that adopt, that we adopt the tax request for the 2018, 19 school year as presented.
Did you have a comment somewhere?
No.
Okay. Second?
Good.
Okay, my first, seconded, Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number ten, reports, activity directors, reports.
Well, I, you know, I told Mr. Reed, actually, probably, you know, probably doesn't need to attend every meeting, if all this just, you know, really needs to share his activities coming up and so on. Maybe at the beginning, end of each season would be good to have Mr. Reed come and visit us, as well as, you know, maybe the little summer, whatever, you know, what's going on, so... So, he'll provide this information for you every month.
Do you have? If I can spell the code right. Okay, number fourteen, principals report. You awake over there?
Yes, I am. I'm trying to figure out something from this part of the bed. Smiley couldn't tell me get it fixed. I don't know what I gotta do.
Is that possible to figure out, department of...
Oh, so it's your turn, boss, tomorrow. All right, we are up and running, I have all classroom materials are finally here. There's a thing called the Code Master Holder, that's my new title, I'm the Code Master Holder. And I don't really want it because you, you can't, I've spent hours and hours, I finally have on Pearson, I told him I'd never do business with them again. I'm so mad at them, I still don't have the Excel software stuff. Thought I was getting it, but still don't have it. Anyway, September fifth was our first PD time with staff, we did our annual blood, actually, that's a little, bloodborne pathogens training for the entire faculty and staff. The rest of the time, I took the K-12 science people and we went to the elementary. I have no idea what the rest of the staff did, I told them what it was a free, free-for-all, I guess, I don't know, I'm sure they did, but we worked on science things. They'd go in and try to... The new science series is based on the new science standards from the State Department. And they're very unique in the aspect that they compiled all of this information in these new standards, and they, they had to go here and go here and go here and find this information, it's very time-consuming for teachers. So, my goal is to hopefully give them about an hour out of all the PD times the first semester, so that they can go in there and try to plan ahead. It's a lot of hands-on things, it's a lot of chemicals, it's a lot of experiments that they just really didn't do before, and it starts up at the young age, so it's very time-consuming. So, I think that the collaboration that I heard there went very well, some of them are still very intimidated by finding everything on the computer. I feel bad for them, but they don't have an option, you don't, you no longer get things in a book that says, go make copies of this. Can't do that anymore. So, that's what we did, I thought it was a very good use of time, MAPS testing started today. We did reading over here, and I think Jill did reading in the elementary. John Baylor test prep will begin September twenty-sixth, some of the sessions are on Wednesday night again. We just cannot get it in the schedule anywhere else except on a Wednesday night, and of course, it's all voluntary, so if a parent chooses for a student not to participate, they may do so, but we just, you can't get it in anywhere else.
Juniors and seniors?
Juniors and seniors, and we have twenty-two on the list. So, we figure we'll end with about ten or twelve, that's kind of the going rate, we usually drop about ten off there. I counted the number of juniors because those are the kids we kinda wanted to take it before they panic and see that state test, because that's, that, I mean, taking the ACT for the first time, knowing that it's going to be recorded as the state test for these guys is a little intimidating, so some of the seniors told the juniors, sign up and take it ahead of time. So, and again, when that time comes, it'll be in April, and we'll go to the public library again, that's just as a good space for us to work. And I think the kids like it there.
They get charged to take it each time, right?
Yes.
So, what, it's a, a score for the school, they have to pay to take it?
No, they don't take it for us, the state pays for it right now. Who knows in about five years or two years what the state will do, but right now, they fund for every kid in state Nebraska to take it. And I don't know if they have some kind of deal worked out with ACT, I have no idea. But, so, we will do that again, and it'll be right across the hall, and I, I think it's a good opportunity for our students, Tony and I will run that. Fifth graders will be going to Ponca State Park on September fourteenth, this is the sixth year for us attending, the kids always love it. I always try to make sure they don't do the same thing every year, but you know what? They can do it because they didn't go the year before, so obviously, it's all due. Mr. Frederick will be the one taking them. We have grandparents day today, we did that format a little different. It always made me claustrophobic in there because you had kids in there, all the grandparents, some parents show up, it was just a lot of people, so we've brought kids in and moved them out as they sang and did their little production, and then all the parents and grandparents went to the classrooms, so... Miles of Smiles is here, September twenty-fifth for the elementary, and then we'll have our, our visit in the spring where they do the ceiling, so this is the, the free checkup for kids. Homecoming is September twenty-eighth. Yay. And FAFSA is October first. And this is their, got together already for a panacholade information for seniors. Mrs. Airhart is doing a fantastic, amazing job.
You doing homecoming a lot of different looking candidates?
Yeah, we picked three.
You start recruiting kids, right?
No, there isn't, and if we picked five, that meant one boy would be sitting on the sideline, and I'm not okay with that. And we're also not going to have a first and a second, we're gonna have a senior point and two, two runner-ups. I, because I don't think that that third person should be standing there all by themselves either. And it may be something every year that's gonna have to be reviewed, because we get down into that sophomore class, I think the sophomore class has five girls total. And I don't like the idea of, and in that case, you could bring them all five up there, I mean, that's a totally different situation, but I think you'll have to take a look at it from year to year until we get back up in, in some, you know, tens and twelves for kids, but leaving one boy on the sideline, I wasn't so crazy about that.
That's it?
First, this report. I don't have anything on, and I don't see any signs up in the yards around town, you guys run it for the school board, you better get them off.
You just think you're sure, huh?
Superintendent's report.
Oh, there you go.
As Mr. Nivik, you mentioned, you know, it's just, it's great to get into the routine, although the routine is not really what kids like, but it's what they need. You know, we hit those first few days, and we just, we try to have some fun, and I've kinda, you know, visited with, you know, teachers in the start of the school year that we had, with Dave Burgess was, was excellent, and one of the things that he talks about is if you give kids an uncommon experience, they'll reward you with an uncommon attitude and effort. Schools are very similar from every other school down the road, they, you know, most of what they have, are required to do is mandated and standardized. So, what makes a school district different from one another? What makes us different than Creighton and Osmond and Bluefield and Wasaw and Crofton and so on? So, I mean, it's just, it really takes a concerted effort to say, we, we need to look and feel different for kids. We need to be uncommon, because schools are common. Schools are common, place to place to place, they're very common, so what makes them stand out? So, you know, something that I, you know, language that I've tried to use is an uncommon experience, we wanna provide our kids with an uncommon experience. You know, a- as we're going through the massive of what's mandated, you know, by the state. So, even though we're into routine, and, and kids may think, well, routine's not very exciting. How do we provide an uncommon experience during that, that lengthy routine, which is the school year, a hundred and seventy-seven school days, a hundred and sixty-five of them all probably look just about the same from one another to the next. So, that, you know, that's language that I've, I've really tried to use. You know, other than that, you know, I've just, you know, attended a couple of meetings, you know, out of districts, I did go to Labor Relations Conference, you know, those are off-year negotiations, just try to stay on top of those things. Next year, that'll be a good meeting for a negotiations committee to go to, because it's pretty good, pretty enlightening.
Did you feel there's anything different to last year?
It seemed, it sounded a lot the same, which is probably good. Another, another tremendous amount that's different, you break out sessions that always be different, and a lot of times, just always say, hey, we just wanna remind you, you know, in these things, because and that's why I like to go, even though it's not our negotiation here, because you expect leadership from me on that, because it's not your expertise, and I expect it to be your expertise, and so I don't really know, but... So, it's good and it's worth it to go, but next year's are obviously our big year, because we heading into a negotiations year. So, you know, other than that, I guess, I, I mean, I just, I think we're rolling, I love it. It's fun for me every day, I try to model that for, for teachers and kids. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
What about the bus driver situation, were you getting any hired?
We've got a couple of them, we got, well, we have one in the pipeline, is that right? Trying to pass test, which is not an easy test to pass. Took me a couple of times to get through the CDL to get my bus driver's license. I shouldn't have just revealed that I used to have one.
It's expired, right?
Yes, I think I, I had some violation, and so I think I exempt for the rest of my life, acquiring one, but... So, we still got, I mean, we're, we're hanging on, I mean, if there was a perfect storm of, on a one o'clock dismissal, we had a couple of folks that weren't able to, to come and bail us out. But it does mean that our transportation director's driving most every day, and I think that's fine. But it's something we are always looking for.
So, if, say, you have to drive and somebody gets stuck, is there somebody back on the sand? Could they, they get ahold of you, and to make sure somebody is out there, takes care of their...
They all have cellphones now, they all...
But I mean, is there a chain of command that they, if Bob was out there and couldn't do anything to help, is there a chain of command that they could go to?
We haven't discussed a, a procedure for if Bob's available, what, what are we gonna do to bail somebody out? Probably a good idea as we get into the winter, right?
All right, we are adjourned now.